We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. Welcome to the April 28th meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Good morning, fellow commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Clerk. First item, please.
First item is item three, Consent Agenda.
We have one item on the consent agenda. Are there questions?
I do not have any questions. I would move for approval of the consent item.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item four, New Business. A, County Clerk, number one, consider all voucher payments.
Madam Chair, this morning we have one voucher report dated April 27th, 2016. Total amount of vouchers is $831,960.59. Major items in the vouchers include Kendall Construction for County Project of $171,000, Detention Center total of $117,000, American Presort $120,000, and Holding Accounts at approximately $145,000. My questions were answered regarding the vouchers, and I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers.
Thank you. There's motion by Commissioner Archer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item A two, Consider Correction Orders.
I'll move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Beeler, second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item B, Information Technology, number one, Consider Authorization and Execution of Contract C-131-2016 with Log Me In for Remote Computer Access Services at the 250 Count Tier at a cost of $2,999.
Good morning, Commissioners. Pat O'Blenner with the Information Technology Department. This item is our annual renewal for our Log Me In services. This is the services that people use to remotely access their computers when they're out of the office and need to be able to get back in to do work. This is a real critical component for people that do need to travel or need to get back in on an emergency basis. The memo lists that we have 115 computers currently set up. That is actually old information. We're closer to 200 computers that we have configured with the software. That's the full-blown version that allows people to get in, do file transfers, and remotely print, just pretty much basically operate remotely as if they were in their office. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thanks, Pat. Are there questions? No? I'll move approval of the contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item B two, Consider Authorization and Execution of Contract C-132-2016 with Converge One, formerly known as NACR, for an Avea Price Branch Exchange PBX system at a cost of $43,076.40.
Commissioners, this item is the annual maintenance for our core private branch exchange system. This is the system that runs all of the desk telephones, connects us to the outside world, et cetera. This system is nearing end of life and is due for replacement eventually. We do have a couple of systems that we're implementing that will replace it over time, but for the time being, it is a critical component, and we do need to continue paying the annual maintenance on that for at least another year. So that's what this item is for. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Are there questions?
I would move for approval.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Cook.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item B three, Consider Approval Request to Issue a Request for Quotation for Modular Office Furniture with a Total Cost Not to Exceed $15,000.
Commissioners, this item here is the Information Technology Department making better use of the space that was previously occupied by the equipment that comprised the mainframe system. We finally were able to retire that system, haul the equipment off, and it did free up a significant amount of floor space in the IT offices. One of the goals that we've had for several years now, and has been part of our strategic plan, has been to get all of the IT staff co-located in one spot. This finally allows us to do that. We'll be able to move some people that we've housed out of the north annex for several years now. We'll be able to bring them into the offices, and they'll be more able to collaborate and coordinate with people on a regular basis, and touch base, and actually have conversations with people in the hallway, and better collaborate. So we're really looking forward to getting everybody in the same spot so that we can all behave as a cohesive and coherent team. So we're really excited about that. We would like to RFQ for modular furniture to complete that area's transformation into office space. It does have some windows that make it a good space for natural lighting, and we'd like to put in some modular furniture that's about 51 inches high that would create about five work areas. We did receive, or we did go out and get some quotes for those. They came in higher than what we would do under a regular phone clerk, so we're asking to do an RFQ to formalize that process. If you have any questions? Oh, we also have a couple of leads on some furniture that may be available from previous operations that have been done. We are tracking those leads down to see if there is adequate furniture to accomplish this, and if we do are successful in finding that, we will just let this drop. But if we're not, we will continue to do the RFQ if we're granted permission to do so. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Pat, for the explanation. Are there questions?
Move to approve the RFQ.
Thank you. There's a motion by Commissioner Archer.
I'll second, but I would also note that Bill Kroll and his facilities team have done an excellent job in renovating the space formerly housed by the IT, by the mainframe. Commissioners, they've just really have done a great job sheet-rocking and bringing it up and making it a much more useful space.
I would have to second that comment. There was a lot of work that was necessary to do. Joey did a tremendous job on building a new wall for us and getting it painted. The craftsmanship was incredible on that. I've got to hire this guy to come do my house if I can get him to do it. Also, the electrician, Evan Meyer, did a huge amount of work in removing abandoned electrical equipment, cabling, and spent a lot of time underneath the raised flooring and got that corrected. We turned off probably 25 circuits, so we've got tremendous capacity now available to that room that we were in. So kudos to those individuals in facilities. They did an excellent job for us.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Archer made the motion. Second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item C, Community Corrections. Number one, Consider Approval of the 2017 Community Corrections Behavioral Health Intervention Grant Application and Budget for $132,170 in funding.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ed O'Rear, Corrections. We are in the midst of preparing for our fiscal year because we are grant-funded by the state through Kansas Department of Corrections. Our fiscal year begins July 1st and runs the subsequent 12 months. The first item before you then is the Behavioral Health Grant. This is, I believe, the fourth year for this. It has been provided by the legislature from House Bill 2170, the Justice Reinvestment Initiative, and it sets aside monies for treatment assessments for our clients, and we, the past couple of years, have contracted with Heartland Rad Act, Regional Alcohol Drug and Assessment Center, for a full-time care coordinator and a full-time recovery coach. They serve both Shawnee County and the Second Judicial District, which we contract and provide their supervision services for. This amount that we are applying for is actually $1,000 less than our previous current year, but it's just a tweaking of some monies, just a little bit of moving around, and we were able to put forth a little bit of savings. I think we're confident that this grant, once it goes to KDOC, we will be approved for the full amount. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have about this grant.
Thanks. Are there questions or comments? No? Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Beeler, second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item C two, Consider Approval of the Fiscal Year 2017 Community Corrections Comprehensive Plan and Budget.
Commissioners, the adult comprehensive plan and budget is for Shawnee County and for Second District as well. We seek your approval on this. The grant funding, on this, these Second and Third District items, it is interesting to note that we are told in January what we are to apply for, how much money we have. It does reflect an increase, as you see on your cover sheet, $63,183.5 in Shawnee County, $15,813.89 for Second District. It may seem a bit unusual that we are looking at receiving additional money. Things seem to be tight with the state. How is it possible that Shawnee County Community Corrections is looking to receive additional money for the upcoming fiscal year? But this is, but budgets and amounts that we are approved for, that comes from a funding formula by the state, and that reflects our increased adult population that we supervise, the risk level of our clientele, which has increased a bit as well, and our success rate of our clients while they are on intensive supervised probation, and that is a significant level above the state median standard. So those things contribute to our increase for this coming fiscal year. We seek your approval on this. Grant has been reviewed and approved by our Community Corrections Advisory Board already.
Thank you. Are there questions? Commissioner Archer?
Well, I will say that the state just doesn't seem to have a budget problem. State does have a budget problem, and this is a testament to success that we've had in Shawnee County in our community corrections, and I'll make a motion to approve the comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm second, but I do have a question, maybe for clarification.
Certainly.
Mr. O'Rear, how does this relate to Shawnee County's community corrections working with other counties? For example, I know that we, Community Corrections supervises out of Jackson County and other jurisdictions.
Correct.
Does this cover that act as well, or are those covered by, is that budget covered in a separate parcel?
No, both of these grants, the Behavioral Health and the Operations Budget Comprehensive Plan before you, does contain a Second District and a Third District funding amount, and we do, Second District is Jackson, Jefferson, Potawatomi, and Wabunsee Counties.
And again, I just want to kind of highlight that we're, when we talk about the Shawnee County Department of Community Corrections, we're not just talking about Shawnee County. We're talking about northeast Kansas.
Yes, we are, absolutely. Five counties in total.
Okay. And again, that testament to the work done by Shawnee County Department of Community Corrections. My second.
Yes. Motion by Commissioner Archer, second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Thank you for all your work there.
Item D, Public Works Solid Waste. Number one, Consider Authorization and Execution of Contract C-133-2016 with Cartograph for Annual Maintenance of Work Director Fleet Extension Sign View and MAP Director Arc GIS Software Packages Used by Public Works and Solid Waste to Track Projects and Equipment Maintenance Costs and Assets Inventories at an Annual Cost of $15,420.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Block with Public Works and Solid Waste. As mentioned, this item is for both Public Works and Solid Waste, but as mentioned, we utilize a software program in our departments to track maintenance costs and work orders in our sign inventory, and this software helps us do that in an efficient manner. And this request here is just to renew the contract we have with Cartograph to continue using those software packages, to continue to do that work. It's worked very well for us over, probably been over a decade now that we've been using this program. We would like to renew it, continue on with those programs. As mentioned in the memo, the cost is $15,420, which is the same as it was last year, and the funding for this would be split 75% to Public Works and 25% to Solid Waste. So if there's any questions regarding this, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Tom. Are there questions?
I would move for approval.
I'll second. Motion by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Beeler. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item D two, Consider Change Order Number One Final to Contract C-15-2016 with Claver Construction, Inc., for the Southeast Tecumseh Road Bridge over Stinson Creek Project, decreasing the amount by $5,023.1.
Commissioners, Tom Block again with Public Works and Solid Waste. This is a Public Works item, and the construction project of this bridge on Southeast Tecumseh Road over Stinson Creek, which is just north of Southeast 29th Street, is now complete, and the road is open. After the final quantities were all noted, we have a decrease in our construction contract amount by $5,023.1. So with that, and this project is being funded by the current county half, set sales tax, then it is our recommendation that we approve the change order to finalize that contract with Claver Construction. So if there's any questions regarding this item, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, Tom. Questions?
Move to approve the contract.
Motion by Commissioner Archer.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item D three, Consider Approval of Resolution Number 2016-33, Amending Resolution Number 2013-7, Delineating County Roads Which Shall Have Weight Limitations.
Commissioners, Tom Block, once again, Public Works and Solid Waste. This too is a Public Works item. We received a couple of requests from a couple of different townships who have, you know, have their own road system, and they are in charge of maintaining that road system. However, when there's any kind of regulatory restrictions or traffic regulations that need to be required on your road system, often, if you come through, the county must be approved. And as far as the establishment of weight limits on a roadway, this is one such case. So we do have a couple of requests. One from Tecumseh Township, and one, a joint request from Williamsport and Topeka Townships to base share in a roadway in which they are requesting to have 10,000 pound weight limits be placed on their roadways. The one from Tecumseh Township is southeast Second Street from Green Road, eastward toward the Shawnee Douglas County line, and then the one from Williamsport and Topeka Townships, that is a request for southeast 61st Street from California to Berarson Road. It's always been my opinion, since those are their roads for their jurisdiction, that if they would like to do this, and there's really no, nothing from an engineering standpoint that would cause us to have any concern, then we just typically recommend the approval. So that is what the case is in this particular instance. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Tom. I know they included letters, but the main reason for the request for the limits?
My understanding is that they have recently improved these roads, and they are just concerned that they will get damaged much quicker than they would like to. That's my understanding.
So they took action at their meetings?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Anyone from the townships here this morning? No? Questions or comments?
And the townships will be responsible for posting the new weight limits. Is that correct?
Yes, we may have.
How's it enforced?
Well, it may be enforced, and that actually is the difficulty of this.
Okay.
We may help put the signs up for them on their behalf, and then we would charge them for those costs because we have the ability to make the signs. But once we have the signs up, then they'd be responsible for maintenance of those signs. Honestly, the difficulty does come in the enforcement because, you know, you need to have law enforcement out there monitoring it, and if they do see someone they think is overweight, then they have to have the weight, the weighing equipment scales. So even though, even though there might be weight limits, the enforcement might, it's difficult to do.
And if I may, I've talked to the sheriff's office before. They don't have the way to put, to enforce, which is disappointing, to say the least. Anyway, thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I concur with the concern. I mean, but by having it up, at least the neighbors, if they see repeated violations, they have a remedy to be able to report and maybe have the sheriff's office contact with the request of the Topeka and Williamsport Township boards specifically. Its concern is construction at Forbes and debris being hauled away off their back gate. And so if the neighbors, and I'm sure the neighbors are going to be more than happy to report to the sheriff if they see violations, at least it gives a remedy where they would have had none otherwise.
Potentially.
Potentially.
Again, the sheriff is limited in what, I believe, my personal opinion is that the sheriff is pretty limited in what they're able to do without portable scales.
I guess my concern would be industry in and around this area, and I'm not as familiar with this area as Commissioner Cook maybe, but just the impact to any one particular industry in that area. Do they have alternate routes that they can take then? I don't know if that was noted, or if they had any feedback at their meetings, or any opposition at their meetings. I'm just not, I don't have that information.
That I'm not aware, and I'll be honest with you, very long, as you see in the resolution, very long list of roads, of which we've had these requests come over the years. At some point, we're going to run out of roads. But so I think that is legitimate concern. I don't know, and I don't want to put the councilors on the spot, but I may put them on the spot of, you know, at what point do we, I guess, you know, if it's their roadway, and if it's under their jurisdiction, do we, I guess we, maybe you, as a commission, have a saying, well, no, we don't want to do it, you know, or is it really their fault?
Yeah, I don't know if they do.
But I mean, we're doing this to accommodate the townships, and they had signatures, page after page after page of signatures of neighbors that want this done in the townships.
Right.
Unless the county councilor wants to confuse us, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
I'd like some weigh-in, though. Sorry.
Punished.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, one thing I would like to point out, that even on this resolution, Rich Eckert County Councilor, there is an exception for service calls. So the trash trucks that obviously weigh more than 10,000 pounds, they can go down the roads because they're servicing an address, a concrete truck, same idea. So there's still ability for those services to be delivered to the people even though the road has this restriction. Now, your other, the point, though, is at some point in time, does a township so restrict transport that it basically shuts off economic activity in that unit? And that's an excellent question. We've not really seen that before. Kind of the answer to that is, is that the county still maintains a fair amount of county roads through most of the townships, and quite frankly, how you differ between a township road and a county road is kind of, that's the answer right there. It's really economic activity. If it's a major road, that's the road that you're supposed to use. If you're on the semi-truck, that's the road you're supposed to use, and those, quite frankly, are designated county roads. And several years ago, I think it was after we got here, we did a whole study of what roads should be township roads and what roads should be county roads. And the point of that study is that we do, we maintain those county roads to make sure that that economic activity can happen countywide. So as long as we're watching for that activity, and at some point in time, maybe a township road grows in importance that we should take it over. That could happen. It could be the reverse of what we've usually been doing, and I don't mean to be babbling, I hope I'm not babbling at this point, but I think what you do is that you watch to make sure that the county roads are maintained, which obviously we do, but also watch to see if any of those township roads become so important that perhaps we should take it. That's the answer to the question.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Not to drag us into a rabbit hole, but we're already there. Mr. Eckert, not that long ago, we had discussion about the county taking over what was a state road, and discussions of neighbors about wanting improvements to their road, and the board saying, that's not really our control, that's a township road. Is that exactly the situation that we're talking about? Is this a weight study, a traffic study, as to who should have jurisdiction over a road?
Well, there's a difference between neighbors who use the road for residential purposes and then roads that are being used for commercial purposes. And what we're doing today is restricting commercial activity on township roads, because really, anything over 10,000 pounds, that's a commercial operation. So that's kind of the difference between the two. And when the residential roads and the township roads, that's not really our call. We're not, we typically, we typically do not get into those discussions.
And that was my question specifically, as to when we, what weights, what standards do we use? When do we apply a need to have it go from a township to the county? Is it based only on commercial use? Is it based on amount of traffic? Is it, what are their standards?
Well, that's actually a better question for Tom, when he thinks we should take a township road back, but obviously, I think it's a mixture of both, heavy residential and commercial.
We've never had that question posed to us in the past, so I mean, just to say, well, when it gets to this and this, then that sort of becomes, I mean, if, if ever a question did become, so for instance, if there was going to be some type of, you know, active commercial industry or industrial along the roadway, that to me would then trigger, you know, regular flag of, hey, we may be better pay attention to that roadway until something like that happens. Yeah, I guess I wouldn't recommend from a county standpoint, we want roads to take over because that's expensive.
Definitely.
Expensive to do, and townships have their own mill levy that they collect specifically for the maintenance of their own roadways. So, I'm not sure if I'm answering your question. I have a great answer for it, to be honest with you, say that this triggers it. But it really just kind of becomes an awareness of the traffic volume, the type of traffic that is occurring on a certain roadway.
And I guess just ultimately, it comes back that at this point, it doesn't sound like we have a designated standard as to when the county should take back over a roadway, and the discussion hasn't reached that point where we've had to consider it before.
Well, as Mr. Eckert had mentioned just a minute ago, and actually had occurred right before I come on with the county, I think it was back in 2006 when it occurred, when they actually did do a study to look at quote-unquote farm-to-market roadways, you know, and those were the ones that we, that they determined, like those should be county roadways, you know, more of a, more of a type of roadway system where people pass through as opposed to stopping along the way, you know, or, so those were the type, those are the roadways that were then designated to be county roadways, and there were some that were taken from the townships, converted to county roadways, and then some that were county roadways that were then transferred to the townships.
And I know it can be confusing for the constituents that live, for example, within my district, there's, Public Works has looked into in Rice Road, where you have the cities on one side, the townships on the other side of the road, and then the discussion becomes who actually has control over the roadway itself. Is it the county's roadway? Is it the city's roadway? Is it the township's roadway? Is it everybody's roadway?
And then that is, that does, you know, raise an issue. There are cases where we have, it's been a practice, I know, in the past, and I think, I think, yeah, I think it's state laws in the past where you cannot do this anymore, but where local jurisdictions would, if they annexed anything, they would annex up to the right-of-way line and leave the roadway in between with the entity who had it before. So there are cases where we have the city on the north side, sure, the perimeter is on the south side, County County has the road, and I think over years of that practice, I think they led us into the past, probably five, six years ago, that when someone were to annex and drown, they picked the roadway along with it.
Is that why we would, Madam Chair? Is that why on? Is that why we would, Madam Chair, is that why along Croco, the city has up to Croco Road and up to 29th Street that the county has after, on either side?
Twenty ninth and Croco?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they have up to the right-of-way along Croco Road. And I believe it's, it becomes a township has on the east side, and then, yeah, we have the roadway along with it.
Yeah, it's complicated. It definitely is complicated. And then it's further complicated by this action we're taking today, that we don't, the townships have the ability to pass this, but then they have to forward it to us for us to approve, or else they can't enforce it. But yet, we don't have really any jurisdiction over township roads. It's very, it's very confusing.
It's the thing with like speed limits.
Exactly.
They request a speed limit, and they'll go do a study and say, this is what we recommend. And even though they want it, we may come back and say, well, this isn't what, this isn't what it warrants. And then it's up to the county commission then to say.
Right.
Yes, we agree or don't agree, or, you know, so.
It's been a good discussion. There isn't anything that I think prevents us from doing this, but I think it's possibly a good topic for when we're having discussions of the comprehensive plan as well, in the incorporated areas of the county, involving the township as much as we possibly can in those discussions, so.
And it would be good, I think, as a commission to decide what involvement do we want to have when it comes to requests like this? Do we want to really get involved and say, no, we disagree, and we're not going to approve it? Or we say, it's your road, you can do with it what you want? And I don't know what the answer to that question is.
Well, and again, finding the balance of residential and business, and making sure that, not everybody's going to be happy about everything, but making sure we at least consider. So with all that being said, I'll move to adopt the resolution. Sir, a second. I don't, or sorry.
I think we have, yes, we have a, we have a motion and a second, Mr. Archer and Commissioner Cook.
I stand corrected. Thank goodness you're here. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tom.
Item E, facilities maintenance, number one, consider authorization and execution of contract C-134-2016, addendum number one to contract C-30-2016 with Shirley Construction, Inc., approving change orders one, two, three, four, five, and eight for the work at the new Shawnee County Health Agency building located at 2600 Southwest East Circle Drive South, with change orders one through five amounted to an additional $12,530.10 and change order number eight allowing for a reduction of $3,3295 for a total additional amount of $9,235.10.
Good morning, Commissioners Bill, Colville, and Minn, and Director. The item before you is the first of a little batch of change orders that are coming through. Any construction project, no matter how well you plan it, there's always going to be some, some things that pop up. The primary issues on these were ceiling heights in various areas that we had to adjust in a large swath we had to build because of prior construction, prior renovation of that building, taking some of the paths that we had planned to use for HVAC work. So that's what it's primarily all about. The deduct is a lighting deduct that helps us out a little bit. It does fall within the budget that you approved for this project for change works. Answering any questions you might have?
Thanks, Bill. Other questions at this time?
No, no approval.
Motion by Commissioner Cook. I'll second. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Thank you, Bill.
Item F, Parks and Recreation, number one, consider approval of mobile food vendor policy and requirements.
Good morning, Commissioners Sean, Austin, Parks and Recreation. This is kind of to give you a little bit of a why and kind of a little history with this. Basically, we got started with this back in 2014. We were approached by some food truck vendors that wanted the opportunity to be within our parks. And as you guys all know, we created the Food Truck Festival with Visit Topeka, and it was a huge hit. So we decided, as we went along, we looked at it from a business point of view, and we also looked at it from how could we offset some costs and different things within our parks. And basically, we put together a committee that met this August and started going through and putting things together. And with the help of the Assistant County Counselor, we have before you basically the policy and procedure and a permit that would allow food vendors to be able to sell in some of our parks. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Thanks, Sean. Questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you. And food trucks are popular, as we saw by, by the event. Are we concerned that this is going to hurt our concession sales, that that will be less profitable than it has been? Or is this, is this an addition or complement that?
This is in addition to complimenting our concession stands. Basically, it will enhance our parks, because most of the concession stands that we have, we have key opportunities of opening when we have key things going on. So we're not always open to the public, but the food vendor, they'll be able to sell within the parks from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So this actually will help offset some of our costs, too, because we're not opening up our stand where the patrons aren't at all the time, if that helps you out.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Cook?
Pointing out a couple of things from the page four of the policy, and I want to thank the committee that worked on this. I mean, it shows that there was a lot of work and consideration that went into it. But I appreciate that the vendor's responsible for the removal of all trash and food waste generated. That's a benefit to the county that we're not taking on additional cost. Also, that the vendors may be assessed additional fees if there is cause for damages to the parks or our land or property. Also, that the, they shall not sell, consume, or distribute any alcoholic beverages. And I know that there was extensive consideration as to whether or not we wanted to open up that door, or, and I appreciate that this is a testing the market, so to speak, and get the policies put in place before we jump headfirst into what we may not anticipate. And then finally, also, just that, that no utilities are being provided to the vendors. So again, the county is not incurring additional expenses. And so we're opening the door for food trucks and to see how it's met, what our response is, and maybe looking at providing us a base and a foundation for the future.
Well, and I'll add to that. We, we actually have an independent contractor agreement that you guys have seen that comes down. And talking with the Assistant County Counselor, basically, when they come to us this morning to permit, they're going to have to fill this portion of it out. And so really, this will come down to you guys, and this will be approved. And so there'll probably be at least a 10 to 15 day waiting period before they actually get their permit to be in our parks.
Is part of this helping inspection for those food vendor trucks, too? Is that part of the contract?
Yeah, they, this is what we have to go out and our stands, we send them to KDHE.
Right.
So they have to actually prove to us when they come in, they have to have their KDHE license before we even issue them a permit. So it's just like what we have to go out for our concession stand, they have to have that as well. So we won't issue a permit unless you have a current KDHE permit through them.
Madam Chair, I do have one question, and this is actually for our clerk. Under county code, we have a commonly referred to as a peddler's license. And how does a food truck or food vendor, does that interact with the peddler's license? I'm not familiar.
We've not, we've not had that. I mean, they've not, they don't qualify under that because we've, neither us nor the city have, have, have had to issue them, not to my knowledge anyway. We, so we've, and I've not had a conversation with the city clerk that they do anything of that effect either. It's, it may have something to do with the fact that people come to, they are in one location, they come to them, as opposed to if they carry, pulled a little hot dog cart along behind them and went door to door, then that's a, then that's more the peddler. And so that's, I'm pretty sure that's the qualification following.
Again, just to try to make sure that we're following all of our code and we're consistent with the application.
Further questions or a motion?
I'll move for approval.
So motion by Commissioner Cook?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item G, Health Agency, number one, consider approval of request to utilize key staffing, a temporary staffing agency to fill a vacant office assistant two position in the medical records department starting May 16th, 2016, at a rate of $15.41 per hour.
Good morning, Commissioners Alice, Weingartner, Health Agency. This request, as noted, is to have a temporary staff person to help support the medical records office. We have an individual that's going to be retiring at the end of May. And because this is a position that would not be part of the transition between the community health center and the local health department, we don't want to advertise for a full-time position. We just want to make it a temporary position so that it would end once the transition's complete.
Thank you, Alice. I'll move approval, if there are questions.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you very much. Item H, Human Resources, number one, consider authorization and execution of contract C-135-2016 with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, ASME, memorandum of understanding for a one-year term that includes all issues and wages.
Good morning, Commissioners Jim Crowell, Human Resources Director. The item before you is a proposed one-year agreement on non-wage issues. It is a three-year agreement on wages, if that makes sense. As we've been discussing, the plan is to stagger our contracts, so we're not coming forward every year with four different contracts. I want to thank ASME for being willing to be the group that takes a one-year, and then we sit back down again to negotiate a three. First of all, thank you again for your willingness to do a CBIZ study and to fund the results of the study. That allowed for very productive negotiations, and this unit is an example of that. I want to thank Tom Block and Chris Ross for assisting me. I better slow down. For assisting me on the county's negotiating team during this process. And I want to thank Roger Lebby.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. He was on the negotiating team with ASME. Like I said, they were very patient through this process. This is a long process. We had productive negotiations. I think we made progress, a lot of areas, including non-wage areas. And this is a good agreement for both sides, and I recommend it. On all, be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Jim. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Cook?
I'll make a motion to approve, also noting that I'm still not exhaling as noted on Monday until we have the final contracts from the rest of our units. But we're one step closer.
Yes, that's right.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Cook. Second by Commissioner Archer. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you for being here this morning as well.
Item I, Commission, number one, acknowledge receipt of the resignation of Donna Walker and Joanne Mc, Michigan, no, Michigan, from the Shawnee County Abbot's to Council on Aging, and consider appointment of Carol M. Jolly.
I'll move approval of the receipt, and then consider appointment of Carol Jolly. But just to note that I, I know that Joanne has served a number of years, and appreciate her service, but also with Donna Walker as well. So that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cook. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item five, Inadequate Communications.
Director, Tom Block again with public local solid waste. There's one final reminder that this Saturday is the e-cycle event, our electronic recycling event. It will be held from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the parking lot immediately south of the city's Holiday Building at Eighth and Madison. And that's free to residents for all, anything that basically has a cord or batteries, although there will be a nominal charge for televisions, the old cathode ray tube, the tube televisions, flat screen TVs and things like that would be free of charge.
Tom, could you also mention the event tomorrow at 9:30 with KDOT?
Yes. Tomorrow, as you know, as we went along trying to figure out how to implement the Willard Bridge project, one of the items as part of the funding package was a no-interest loan agreement with KDOT. KDOT also, as you know, has agreed to that. And tomorrow, we are going to have an event up in Willard, basically an agreement signing event. Because this is, this is really a pretty creative way of, that we've discovered, or not discovered, that we, that we developed to fund a local project essentially all on our own, which I think the commission should be very proud of, because this is, this was a very challenging project financially, how to do that. And with the use of the, you know, the funds that we, that we are anticipating for current sales tax, and with your negotiation with the city on the future sales tax, and then with the agreement that we will be, we will be signing with KDOT, we'll be using all local funds, when it's all said and done, to construct this 20 million plus project. So it's, so we're going to have an event, I guess, to celebrate that.
Nine, nine thirty?
Nine thirty, yes. I think. If I'm not there, if I miss it, I don't know what time, but yes, I am.
I think they were going to have.
I better be there, because I think I'm in seeing you there.
Yeah, I was going to say.
I will check to make sure.
I think they were going to have the event closer to the river, but given all the rain, they're having it up at the shop.
I think we're going to have to play it by ear.
Yeah, oh, yeah, okay, okay. All right.
I will check my calendar before I go.
And then just, I know we've had, with all the rain on Tuesday night, just an update on roads around the area.
Well, we've had one road, actually, it was, I guess, this is ever going to happen, the timing is not perfect. We had, we have, we had scheduled, there's an item up on Northwest 46th Street, just east of Hope Road, in which there's, there's a sharp embankment from that roadway that we've always, we've been, we've been aware of, a little bit concerned with. So over the past year, we've been doing plans to replace a couple of large culverts in this area, and then buy some additional right-of-way to, to give us more structural strength for that embankment, because we were afraid of it. We were just afraid of that it might slide. Well, the delus that we had this past weekend and the amount of rain, that road actually did slip off. So the fortunate thing is, you know, it slipped off, and I think, I think about half the roadway had slid down the embankment, you know, five days before we were going to close it to fix it. So the timing of that happening, I guess, for lack of a better term, couldn't have been better, because we were getting ready to close it anyway. But I don't know if that's going to make our job easier or harder, because maybe it already did a lot of excavation force. But, but I guess that just, I guess confirms what our concerns were. But so that roadway now is closed, and will be closed, I think, for twelve weeks, 46th, East of Hope, which is near the Silver Lake area. We've had some other roadways that, I think Carlson Road was closed due to, due to an overtopping of the road. That was opened up yesterday morning. We're still investigating a lot of all of our bridges. So that's going to take a little while to see if we identify any other damages. But all in all, for the amount of rain that we had, I'll be honest, it didn't, it wasn't nearly as bad as I might have expected as far as flooded. And that might be because we had a nice bright winter. But there, I know our, our bridge crews out fixing a couple of areas right now. But for the most part, besides 46th Street, we came fairly decently.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Tom, any damage to the construction on the Willard Bridge?
Not the actual construction. The causeway did get wiped away. Now, I do know that may keep them out of the river for the rest of the summer, because they cannot go in and excavate anymore out of the river. But I do know that you can actually bring material in and replace it. And I do know that there was stockpiling sand for the potential that it did get washed away. I think they'll, the contractor will just have to make a decision, because there's enough work to do outside the river, you know. And they got the main, they got all the drilled shafts in, and... And they, and they got the main, they got all the drilled shafts in, and some of the piers in the river already constructed. But getting the shafts in was really, really a key point, was the three main shafts in the river. They got all those done. Bells have to make a decision on, do we want to wait until August and just work outside the river? Or do they want to spend time to try to take any sand they had stockpiled and put back in the river? So that will be their call. But, but from our standpoint, getting the work done in the river, the shafts, and that was, that was what we were really hoping to accomplish before the causeway washed away. And we had mentioned, or we had talked amongst ourselves, typically goes, it's not if the causeway ever gets washed away, it's when it will be washed away, and we have it washed away a couple days ago.
Good.
And they had moved their equipment out to a little bit higher ground and that sort of thing, cranes.
Yeah, yeah, they've, we've been very pleased with what they've been doing and their, and their progress thus far, so. This isn't, this is not their first rodeo in building a major bridge. They, they know what they're doing, so.
All right, thank you, Tom.
Good morning, Commissioners, Dustin Golf, Emergency Management. Just wanted to take a minute and talk about a couple of things that happened the other night with activation, just for some clarity, I guess. We did activate the tornado sirens without their warning system. All of them did go off. There was some reports came back to us that maybe they didn't, had some phone calls, people couldn't hear them inside their house, those kinds of things. I just want to take an opportunity to let people know, please get a weather radio. Alternate means of getting the alarm, the construction standards of houses are better. They're made to keep sound out, especially when there's wind, hail, and rain. So you're not going to hear a siren possibly, so we want you to get an alternate method of getting that alarm. They're not made to be heard indoors, they are made for outdoor warning systems, and that's why they're placed where they're at as well. So that's one thing. Please get a weather radio or some other system. I'm going to have more on Monday. We're actually going through and doing analysis on all of our activities. We use the virtual EOC, and while I'm talking about that, I want to say thanks to Tom Block, Kim Walls, Dirk Christian. To be short on this one, they were very, very responsible with road closures. We had two rooms open on the virtual EOC, which all of our people logged in. We were able to handle basically any situation that did pop up. The good thing about that is everything's on a time mark, so we can go back and say we have made this decision based on this information we had at that time. That with social media. And then the PIO room was pretty, pretty interesting, it was the first time we've used it during an actual response. We had the governor's office in there paying attention to what we were doing, of course KDOT and some others, so that was, that was really good to see all of that is recorded again. We can go back and do analysis on all of our decisions and, and stuff that we did along the way. But again, we'll have more on Monday. I'll have some more information for you. I think, I was going to save this till Monday, but I got to say something about it now. The guys at Fire District Four were hustling.
Oh, they were.
The west side of the county was really, really taking a beating with flooding and everything else. And those guys volunteered, they had helped a mission, Shawnee County Sheriff's Office at Topeka Fire. I mean, they had a lot of people going out there helping out. I ended up going out there overnight on the late, later response, and some of our media partners were out there as well, and it just worked well. They were doing a very, very dangerous rescue, and it was very impressive to see. They were patient, they took their time, they did it right, and they need some recognition for that. So I plan on saying, saying and maybe showing some pictures on Monday.
Yeah, that'd be good, that'd be good.
If you have any questions.
Thank you, Dustin.
Just thank you for your professionalism. I have nothing but compliments from the work that the emergency management did over this storm.
I, I agree. And Desti, you kept us vigilant through the whole day. I know we were getting situations for sit reps all, all day.
We probably overloaded.
No, no, I, I don't consider that overload at all. I'd rather have it overload than not at all. So very much appreciated, but, and, and you worked late into the night. I know I was a guest login in the VEOC, correct?
Yes.
Get my terms right? And watched what was happening and the responses from, from Fire District Four. I mean, and the sheriff's office and Public Works, I mean, there was, there was a lot going on after the storms left, so. Good to all of you.
Also, I have reminded you to mention this. We, we did a live Facebook thing with 580 earlier today, and we announced, and we actually practiced this, so this was the first time this had happened. Our sirens are set, so we can set them off individually, or by sector, or the whole county, those kinds of things. And this year, we're trying not to overwarn people, because there's enough hype with these things anyway. So when we set these alarms off, we want to make sure that they are for the warned area. So we're encouraging people, don't run outside when you hear the siren, even though we're Kansasans and it's going to happen anyway. But, and take pictures. But we sound those based on the polygon that we get from National Weather Service, and that polygon just happened to take up almost all of Shawnee County on the first one. When we do those, we're actually tweeting the pictures out for posterity, so people see why we're doing what we're doing as well. And you'll see that that, that fan took up most of Shawnee County. So we initially sounded for the whole county, and as the storm moved north, we were to clarify through spotters where the rotation was and all those things, and we trimmed it down to where that actual warning was, which was north of the county. So if you didn't hear sirens in the south part of the county during the later part of that warning, there's a reason for that. You weren't in danger. Even though the warning was for Shawnee County, we were to clarify where the actual site was. So again, please get a weather radio, and if you can hear the sirens, good, but we are going to sound those specifically if they're there.
What's challenging is when you hear the sirens and you hear flash flood warning as well. So I mean, you know...
There's a few things going on here.
Yeah, there was, there was a lot going on, and the number one threat is flooding, correct?
Yeah, statewide, the number one threat across the risk is flooding, and tornadoes at the time were more damaging, more significant, but it's going to take us a little longer to deal with flooding, recover from flooding.
Exactly.
And they, they're just, I hate flooding.
Yeah, I do, too. Yeah, I do, too.
So, not that I don't like anything else.
Yeah, but, yeah, right.
Also, last, last thing I before forget, Wabunsee County Emergency Management, Amy Turpin, fantastic helping us out as well with Fire District Four. We had that Carlson Road washout, we had a response issue, and they stepped up with Wabunsee County Dispatch, Shawnee County Dispatch, and they, we solved that problem a lot quicker than that could ever be done in the past, I think, so.
Again, another plug to have your to-go pack ready. I mean, don't wait. I've got one in my office, I've got one at home. It's, it's, just don't wait. It, it'll happen at some point in time, so. All right. Anyone else?
Good morning, Commissioners, Jeff Shavon, Kansas Expo Center. This weekend, we're starting up with our Capital City Carnage Demo Derby. There's going to be three shows, 175 cars, 30,000 to the winner, and we've got drivers from Canada to Florida, New York to Utah, so bringing a lot of people in. And then on Monday is second round of the Roadrunners Games, I've been playing Monday and Tuesday. Tickets are only $2 with $2 popcorn and $2 Pepsi's. That's what's going on at the Expo Center. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Anyone else? Commissioners, Commissioner Archer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff, I was looking at the May and June events calendar for the Expo Center, and, gosh, there's, something's going on all the time at the Expo Center, the graduation ceremonies, and I know Jeff and his staff are working on a new event called Third Thursdays, and there's going to be more information on that, and that's going to be an exciting event. So thanks for coming, Jeff, appreciate your, your support here. This morning, had the opportunity to attend the Auburn Washburn Schools 15th Annual Spring Breakfast. I saw Eric there, and Commissioner Bueller was, was there, and this is a great event. You know, we'd like to say that Scott McWilliams, the new superintendent at 437, is really carrying on a tradition of excellence from Dr. Brimna Dietrich. Our kids went to 437, and now our grandkids are going to 437. It's, it's a well, well-run organization, and I'm proud of it, so. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Cook?
Yesterday, I had the opportunity to go to the Highland Park High School Career Exploring Fair. There were a number of employers across the county there, and we were talking with high school students. I know the sheriff's office was there, trying to talk to young students as they make their career paths, whether they want to work for the county, and the county is a major employer for Shawnee County with over 1,100 employees, everything from lifeguards to working community centers, to students that are maybe looking at having their RN license or CNA, working with the health clinic or other, the health agency, people that were looking at law enforcement and with the Department of Corrections or the Shawnee County Sheriff, but also just the employers across the county, everything from CPAs to financial accountants, to people working with Rezers and Hills. And so it was just a good opportunity for young students to think about their career and how they might be able to benefit Shawnee County. Thank you.
All right, and I don't really, I have anything to add. Next item, please.
Item six, Detective Session.
There is a need for an executive session, executive session not to exceed 15 minutes for purposes of employer-employee negotiations. So that is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero, 15 minutes.
You know, it was, you know, self-sacrificing to save the eaglets during the storm.
No, that, no, he stopped here then. Last time you climbed a tree with an umbrella, you know, that, it was real...